I would like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order. Welcome, everybody here, and welcome our viewers on cable. I'm going to ask you to join me in a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we're going, I'm going to ask you all in a moment to join me in a moment of silence to mourn the passing of two exceptional individuals and two exceptional educators from our district as well as from southeastern Massachusetts. And I want, I sadly announce the passing of Richard Silva. Dick Silva was principal at Federal Furnace School and assistant superintendent in here, in Plymouth, spanning many years. He also served on the school committee for many years. We all know Richard Silva. Many of us attended the Wake last week. Very nice family, so certainly in honor of the family and at their time of loss, I'll be asking you in a moment to join me in a moment of silence. We also sadly announce the passing of Leonard Uart. Leonard, as well, dedicated his life to education, teaching in New Bedford Public Schools, the Plymouth Public Schools, and Dartmouth Public Schools. Leonard actually won the Teacher of the Year Award in 1997. So this is a loss for the educational community here in southeastern New England, so please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. I also want to certainly welcome our newly-elected school committee members and our brand-new school committee member. In welcoming you, I would like to invite you to come to center stage here and accept the oath of office from our town clerk. Please do.
I recognize that in addition to these ladies, Margie Burgess was also elected at a time that he represented, and she'll be sworn in when she's able to be.
Ms. Burgess is recovering from surgery.
Kimberly Sadbury-Hunt, Edna Hayward, you have been elected to a three-year term through 2021 as members of the Plymouth School Committee. Do you solemnly swear that you are faithfully and impartially discharging and performing the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the school committee in accordance with the bylaws and charter of the town of Plymouth and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
In addition to swearing in the new members, this first meeting after the election, town election, is the reorganization of the school committee. And the reorganization of the school committee means that the committee will choose its executive board. And to do that, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Maestis.
Good evening, everyone. Typically, after the town election, we have a reorganization. Tonight is that night. Saturday was the election. And at this point, I'd like to open up the floor for nominations for Chair of the Plymouth School Committee. Do I have any nominations? Mrs. Hunt.
I nominate Jim Sorensen.
We have one nomination for the Chair of Plymouth School Committee, James Sorensen. Do I have any other nominations? Do we have a second on the nomination? Mr. Morgan, second's the nomination. Any other nominations? And at this point, I'd like to allow the school committee members to vote for the one nomination of, for school committee chair. Mr. James Sorensen, please lodge your vote by raising your right hand. And that is unanimous. Mrs. Dargie, for the record, could you jot down that Mr. Sorensen is the Chair of the Plymouth School Committee? At this point, I turn the meeting over back to Dr. Sorensen.
Thank you very much, Dr. Maestis, and I thank my school committee members for your support. And I certainly want you to know that I plan to do the best that I can in being the leader of this committee for the next year, but I certainly welcome your input. As we go throughout the year, there are many times when I screw up, and I think you all know that. Please do not hesitate to point that out to me. Please, that's how we get better. Now, the chair is open for nominations for the vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Hunt for vice chair.
We have a motion to nominate Ms. Hunt for the position of vice chair. I, that requires a second, I think. So is there a second to that?
A second.
We have a second from Ms. Trusselli. Are there any names to put in nomination for the position of vice chair? Okay? Seeing none, we will then call for the vote by a show of hands. All those in favor of supporting Ms. Hunt for her position as vice chairman of the school committee, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. That is all for unanimous. The floor is now open for nominations for the position of committee secretary. Ms. Hunt.
I nominate Robert Morgan.
Mr. Morgan has been nominated for the position of secretary. Is there any other names to put forth in the nomination for the position of secretary? Seeing no other hands, is there a second to that nomination? For Mr. Morgan, for, so we have a motion made and seconded from Mr. Morgan as Secretary of the school committee? All those in favor? That is unanimous. So the executive board will remain the same. Thank you very much, everybody. And now we can move on to, and Ms. Hunt has to leave the meeting at this point for a very important pinning ceremony. Congratulations for your daughter.
I will hopefully be back. Well, unless you have a short meeting.
Thank you.
How much way I should wish it to be a short meeting or for me to come back. Thank you, everybody. It's a joke, yeah.
In the next couple of weeks, I have to fill all of the positions of the school liaison and subcommittee positions. So I would welcome the committee to submit to me in writing their preference for the subcommittees they'd like to serve on and the liaisons for the schools they'd like to relate to. I can't guarantee you'll get everything you want, but I'll do my best to meet all those requirements.
Dr. Sorensen, Ms. Badger.
Mr. Morgan.
Do you want them by, like, this Friday, or when do you want our?
When is our next meeting?
June 4th.
By the next meeting.
By the next meeting, okay.
This is also the time to receive our new student representatives. Dr. Maestis.
Yes, tonight, we have one new student representative. And, Mrs. Dargie, do you have the name of the individual?
Abigail Pike.
Abigail Pike will be our new representative.
The student representatives in the room, could you all come up to the table right here, please?
Dr. Sorensen, we only have two of them.
Oh, okay.
They're running very early.
Oh, we're running early. Well, then, since it's just the two of you, you can take your place at the table. We didn't have enough chairs before, and that's why I told you to come here. So, thank you. I'm glad you're so polished and experienced. So, this would have been Megan's last meeting.
Yes, I think she's coming.
Okay.
I think they planted on the seven o'clock starts.
Okay, all right. So we'll recognize them and we'll do your, do you want to wait your report till they're all here?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, we'll do that, then.
Excellent.
Okay. Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who isn't already on the agenda who would like to speak to the school committee? Please come on down front and identify yourself.
Pat McCarthy, Precinct 5. And I'm just glad I could be here tonight, because, when you moved the meeting up, because I have another meeting to go to, but I just want to wish you all the best of luck. And I wasn't able to be here, I was away two weeks ago, and I know Dennis is very happy he's leaving the committee in good hands. And we want to congratulate his son, who won a town meeting member seat on Saturday. But I just want to wish you the best of luck, and I think it's absolutely awesome, all the postings that have been going on, on Facebook and all the other mechanisms that are available to the public. And I just hope that the public realizes all the good things that are happening in Plymouth schools. And I wish you all the best of luck, and I know you will continue to do a good job, and you don't get the credit for all the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy, and we certainly appreciate your support over the years. Thank you very much. Every year at this point, every year at this time, we like to take some time for our meeting and recognize many of the accomplishments of our visual arts program. So, Dr. Maestis.
Yes, tonight, we have quite a few students that will be receiving certificates. They will receive a certificate because their artwork was placed at Central Office and displayed. Parents have come through, grandparents have come through to actually look at their artwork. It's a sad day when the Visual and Performing Arts Office comes and removes those pictures and that artwork from our offices. And tonight, we are going to have the opportunity to recognize those individual students for their contributions and also their teachers for the inspiration that they've provided in the artwork that has been displayed. So, I'm not sure if, are they ready to go?
I don't think they're anticipating this, really.
Yeah, I think, I think, Dr. Sorensen, we may have to delay a little.
We're really moving much too quickly here.
And I know everyone's excited about that, but we may want to circle back to give those students an opportunity to get here.
All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll hold it until they're all lined up in the hall and bring them in then.
You can check.
Continue, and I'll check on that.
Go ahead. Dr. Campbell will give us the thumbs up when we're ready to go. And if I could, Dr. Sorensen, I'd like to see if Mr. Morgan might be able to help me to pass out the certificates tonight. Would you?
Be my honor.
Awesome, okay, thank you. So we'll move on.
So, bear with me, folks. We're down to old business.
Yes.
We discussed old business rather thoroughly two meetings ago. Is there any need to, any old business that we need to talk about tonight? I'm not seeing any hands, so I'm going to move off that one and go to new business. Any items to come up on the new business list? Again, not seeing any hands. This meeting may be before, oh, before it starts. Superintendent's report.
Tonight, I have a few items to report on for the, for the school committee. I'm sure many of you have heard over the weekend, the community of Stoughton experienced a tragedy where they lost four students in a car accident. Our thoughts and prayers are, go out to the family and the students and the school community in Stoughton. And through you, Dr. Sorensen, I'd like to request a moment of silence for those individual students and families.
Last week, I had the opportunity to visit the Plymouth Early Childhood Center, and I taught for three hours in the Early Childhood Center, and I can tell you that they kept me on my toes. And, yes, but what a great day. And then I had the opportunity to serve lunch at PCIS, which was, was another fascinating opportunity, just to see the kids. And I will tell you that, I was serving with Chief O'Terry, and he's, he's a comedy actor himself. So, everybody comes up, and he's making jokes with the kids, but you know what? Our kids were extremely polite. They look you in the eye, say thank you, every single kid. We served three lunches, hundreds of kids, and I'm gonna tell you, they, I felt very encouraged that our kids are, are really grown-up respectful. Anyway, when they were in front of the police chief and the superintendent, they were respectful. So, I was very, I was very happy to be able to do that. And we also had the opportunity, last week, to go to Madamet, and we did an on-the-road visit at Madamet Elementary and to actually, you know, we, we constantly are promoting the programs and promoting what happens across the district, but to actually see these things in action and to see our students with great confidence leading the school committee through the, through the school. I was a spectator in the whole event. They, you know, just to sit back and watch all this play out was, was really incredible. So, hats off to Madamet. I know they'll be here later tonight, but I think they, they did a fantastic job. So, with that said, Dr. Sorensen, I just have one item, other item to report on tonight. We have graduation, graduations coming up, and you did receive your parking passes tonight. Make sure that you display those prominently on your dash at Memorial Hall. We have a full day ahead of us, and also, there are a great deal of other activities between now and the end of school year. We'll try to make sure that you get invitations to some of the things that you might want to be at, okay? So we'll work with the schools to try to make that happen. All right? With that said, I'll turn it back to you, Dr. Sorensen, and it looks like we're...
Any questions for Dr. Maestis on his report? Are we ready for the visual arts presentations?
They won't be ready till seven o'clock.
They'll be ready at seven o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we have our student representatives here. Don't sit down, come right up to the table.
I saw them going to walk out.
I'm glad you came early. We have a new student representative.
Hi.
Hi, and you are Abigail Pike.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thanks.
And this is Megan's last meeting.
It is.
So let me start, before you guys give your report, to say, Megan, you know, you've made a great contribution to this committee. You helped us make decisions, you and your team. You've shown great leadership this year, especially around the time of that whole demonstration, and we appreciated your input. And as we go on in the future, the student representatives, we're always looking for you guys to give us direction, all right? Don't hesitate to do that. If you don't want to do it publicly, reach out to any one of us singly. If you pick up something in school that, you know, this is a concern, we're here to solve problems. Having said that, we will start with North.
So, we have graduation, which is going to be taking place on Saturday, June 2nd, and we have the afternoon graduation, which will begin at 12:30 PM, and it'll be held on Plymouth North High School's Mario J. Romano Field. And in the event of bad weather, it'll be taking place in the gym. And then we have a lot of upcoming events for the Plymouth North seniors. Hypnotist Night will be May 23rd at 6:00 PM. The last day of classes for seniors will be this Thursday, May 24th. And then Class Day will be May 25th, which is also known as Pretty Day. Graduation Practice will be May 29th at 8:00 AM. And then the Dinner Dance will be the same night at 6:00 PM at Indian Pond Country Club in Kingston. And then we have another graduation practice on May 31st at 8:00 AM. And then Convocation at May 31st, on May 31st at 6:30 PM. And then, like I said, graduation on June 2nd at 12:30 PM. Tomorrow, there will be a high honors celebration for students who received high honors for first, second, and third quarters, and it will be in the Performing Arts Center at 8:45 with light refreshments in the cafeteria. Solo auditions for Plymouth North's a cappella groups will be May 29th and May 30th. For more information to sign up for solo auditions, students should go to pnhs-sings.com or see Mr. Grossman. Progress reports were sent home on Friday for non-seniors, so check your students, check your students' ASPNS to see the most current academic standings. Senior final exams have taken place this week, and they'll continue through Thursday. MCAS will take place for Grade 10 on Wednesday, May 23rd, and Thursday, May 24th. We also have our National First Robotics Signing Day. Plymouth North students and First Robotics Team 23 participated in National First Robotics Signing Day that highlights academic scholars and robotic students who have committed to attend college next fall to pursue a degree in engineering. Junior Prom was over the weekend. On Friday, it was held at the Seacrest in Falmouth. The evening was a success with over 340 guests. Congratulations to the 2018 Prom King and Queen voted by their peers, were Cole Guston and Anna Sheehan. The Prom Court considered of Christina Lennon, Helen Fraser, Ruby Norris, myself, sorry. Brooke Peterson, Robbie Gomes, Jack Parker, Mike Tossi, and Doug Harvey, and I do want to say, Prom was a lot of fun. Senior Project, on May 16th, seniors at Plymouth North High School completed their year-long senior project by presenting their experiences to a panel of community members and Plymouth North faculty. Over 67 students completed the senior project program, which seeks to provide students with real-world experience with mentors in the fields they may enter in the future. And Senior Athlete Awards Ceremony was on Sunday, May 20th. So the Athletic Department at Plymouth North held its annual Senior Athletic Awards Night. 112 seniors were recognized for their involvement in sports while here at North. Also, 20 seniors were also given the Iron Eagle Award, and this award is given to students who participated in a sport all three seasons for the four years that they were at North. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, and now over to South.
Last week, we had our annual Top 10 Breakfast in the Culinary Arts, and the top 10 academic seniors were recognized, and thank you to Central Office Administration for attending this annual event. This past Saturday, South Avenue hosted its first a cappella concert. They were later joined by professional group Ball in the House. It was a great night and really showcased the a cappella program at South, and thanks to our choral director, Jason Luciana. The Ninth Annual Senior Athletic Awards Night took place last night. 111 South senior athletes were recognized. Each student received a plaque with their team, individual photo. All-star and league championship teams, as well as three sport competitors, competitive athletes were honored. Also, special recognition was given to our athletes that played three sports for consecutive years. Special thanks to Ms. Shaver and Mr. Fry for organizing this event. Wednesday night is the Spring Course Concert, and Thursday night is the Spring Instrumental Concert. Both events begin at 7:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center. Senior Final Exams began this morning and will go through Thursday. Class Day starts, is on Friday, and it starts at 8:30 AM. Graduation status will also be finalized on Friday afternoon. Mandatory graduation rehearsals will take place next Tuesday and Friday at Memorial Hall, beginning at 11:00 AM. The commencement ceremony will take place on Saturday, June 2nd, at 9:30 at Memorial Hall. Senior Scholarship and Awards Night will take place on Wednesday next week at 7:00 PM, followed by the Senior Dinner Dance on Thursday at the Pompanset Inn. Congrats to Boys Lacrosse, Girls Tennis, and Softball Programs for qualifying for the state tournament. And finally, congrats to Panther TV, as they were awarded the Best School News Program in New England. In addition, the Graphic Arts Program received the Best Overall PSA for the Boston region. The group consisted of Miles LaGro, Avery Daly, Heather Oxen, Paige Cassidy, and Natalie Rita. And I just wanted to say, thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to be the student representative for the school committee. I really enjoyed my past two years, and I'm really going to miss being in Plymouth Public Schools, so, thank you.
Thank you, Megan, and you're certainly very welcome. Dr. Maestis, the name tag?
Yes, Megan. You know, we, we, every year, we get to this moment where you get to take your name tag from the school committee plaque, and you can actually put that in your dorm room, and that way, everybody, 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 everyone's going to think that you're super prepared going into school, all right?
This is exactly what I needed for my dorm room.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's awesome, it's awesome to have you here, and, and we'll see you at graduation.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, student reps, thank you. If you want to come back to the table here. We are going to do retirements, please, Ms. Fry.
Yes. We have, we're fortunate with all the NDA celebrations to also celebrate our retirees last week, so, there were about 24 of them, and these are three additional that have come in through then. So they were fantastic in reflecting on their time. They had a lunch in culinary at Plymouth South, so it was great. Our three retirements tonight are Karen Johnson, who's been a math teacher for 32 years at Plymouth South Middle School, Diane Soares, the Food Services Manager for 39 years at Plymouth North, and Brian Sullivan, a second-shift custodian for 31 years at PCIS. Very long careers.
So we have over 100 years of service with those three individuals with the school, for the school community, and the school committee wishes them best of luck in their retirement. Thank you. I'm waiting for a sign from you folks to go ahead with this, I'm going to keep moving down the agenda.
Waiting for a sign from the door, so.
Correspondence, Mr. Morgan?
Yes, can I get the screen to move forward here?
I don't think there is any.
I, when I checked the other day, there was not. No correspondence this evening.
Okay, there are no, there's no correspondence for the school committee this evening. We have a recommendation for an overnight field trip to Paris. Who's handling that?
They're not here.
They're not here yet? Oh, yes, they are here, that's great.
All right, we can, so, I'll go and start with that, Dr. Sorensen. So, tonight, we have a request for a field trip, international field trip, Plymouth South High School, and this is a student trip to France. We have Matt Carpanito's here tonight. He's the department head for the Foreign Language Department at Plymouth South High School, and he is here to present information relative to this trip, and I'll turn it over to you, Matt, to begin.
Good evening, Dr. Maestis. Good evening, administration, good evening, school committee. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight, this evening, to petition on behalf of the students at Plymouth South High School, the opportunity to travel to Paris, France. It's very exciting, because I remember the first time that I appeared before the committee a number of years ago. It was the first time that foreign, foreign travel had been proposed in the district in a few years, and at this point, I think that the culture of, of the district has really expanded, and we're at a point where we're giving our students more and more opportunities to travel abroad. So, in that regard, I'd like to turn it over to French teacher and hopefully the chaperone for the foreign exchange, the, the French travel exchange to, to Paris, Ms. Michelle Kelly.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for your time. I believe we forwarded some documents to you related to the trip that you might have. I'm basically just here to answer any questions that you have. The idea is that we take a group of students to the Paris region, probably in mid-April of next year, and lasting approximately seven to 10 days. The bulk of this trip will take place in a homestay situation, so the students will be staying with families in the Paris region. I'm very insistent on the fact that there be some kind of homestay component to this. I am looking for a true cultural and linguistic immersion. I do not want to be getting on a bus and going to one city and seeing a site, and then getting on a bus and going to another city and seeing a site. I really want the students to understand what it's like to be French, to have the opportunity to use their language skills and improve their language skills. There's one cultural component at the end of the trip where the students would have the opportunity to visit the castles in the Loire Valley and learn a little bit about the kings and the time that Leonardo da Vinci spent there, and then one stay up in Paris the night before we would leave. I can tell you personally, as a, as a student that took foreign languages in high school, the opportunity to participate in a homestay experience changed the entire course of my life in a very positive way, so, I hope you consider it. Thank you.
Committee, committee members with observations or questions or comments?
It's a great trip.
Go ahead, Ms. Badger.
I'd just like to move that we accept the field trip as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the field trip as presented. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Trusselli on a question. I just want, I just want to, now, I'm probably pretty old-fashioned, so maybe we can disregard what I'm about to say, but there was reference to touring a wine cellar?
No, that is not going to take place on the show.
It was on the list, that's why.
Yeah. It was, it said an optional tour, I have not exercised that option.
All right, that's great.
I'm very old-fashioned myself.
I would like to do that, but...
Not, not necessarily with high school students.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, we'll take that vote electronically.
I'm on your side. Oh, good. Oh, here we go.
It looks like everybody has voted in favor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming in tonight. Now we're going to return back to the student recognition part of tonight's agenda, turning it back over to Dr. Maestis and Secretary Morgan.
Yes, tonight, I'd like to welcome all our families here tonight to recognize your children for their artwork. The presentation that we have tonight, we do annually, and we do this to recognize students because their artwork was prominently displayed at Central Office in Plymouth on South Meadow Road, and your children's artwork has really, it has the opportunity to brighten the halls of Central Office. Many parents have come through, grandparents have come through, and I just want you to know that their artwork is absolutely wonderful, and we're honored to have the opportunity tonight to give them a level of encouragement and also recognition for their work. And we will, tonight, what we'll do is, we're going to come right to the middle of the circle, and I will read the name of the individual, and Mr. Morgan will actually hand out the certificate to the, the young person that actually is being recognized. Feel free to take pictures. This school committee meeting is being recorded, and it will be online, so you can actually...
Check, check, check. Got it? Alright. So, we're gonna start off with Nathaniel Morton Elementary School and Sophia Sears. Brooke Butts, Nathaniel Morton. Brooke Butts. Jervon Jackson, Federal Furnace Elementary. My wife's name is Ruby. Kaylee Donovan, West Elementary. Ally, I got it. Thank you. Molly St. Jellinas. St. Gele. Joseph Hayes, South Elementary. Avery Furman, Cold Spring. Stella Reed, South Elementary. Nora Lindsay, Indian Brook Elementary. Audrey Martin, Manomet Elementary. Phoebe Hovey, Hedge Elementary. Kyra Thompson, South Middle School. Emily Henderson, PCIS. Hannah Beatrice de Oliveira. Sylla Beltran, Plymouth South High School. Liliana Brown, Plymouth South High. Alexandra Godfrey, South High School. Sidney Adams, Plymouth North. Adam Capozzi, Plymouth North. Ty Pearson, Plymouth North. Sarah Hoben, Plymouth North. John Hoben, PCIS. Lila Shea, Federal Furnace Elementary. And the last one is Haley Christopher from Manomet Elementary. I'd like to thank all the parents, grandparents, family members here tonight to congratulate and be here tonight to honor your children for the work that they've done. It really means a lot to us to be able to exhibit your children's artwork and we're just honored to share a moment with them and to share it with the community, their great work. So, thank you so much for coming and continue to support the schools. We got a lot of things coming. You heard some things tonight about trips that we take, but the Plymouth Public Schools are on the move and we want to thank you all for coming tonight to enjoy just a bit of that. Thank you so much.
The school committee is gonna stand in recess for ten minutes. Okay, I'd like to bring us back into session. And the item on our agenda right now is a mid-cycle update. Dr. Maestis?
Yes, tonight, we have Manomet Elementary and the school council from Manomet. They're here to present their school improvement plan. Dr. Fraen is here to lead his team and he will introduce them as...
Hello, everybody. Come on up.
And they were all here even though we're running a little early, so that's great. Thank you.
Is this one right here okay?
That one is ready to go, Dr. Fraen.
Okay. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. I am joined by Michelle Henderson, one of our kindergarten teachers at Manomet; Lauren Lesher, one of our monitor special needs teachers; and Matt Reardon, one of the parents at Manomet Elementary of a first grader at Manomet. We are, first of all, we were thrilled to have the opportunity to have school committee at Manomet School last week for the traveling visit and tour. And I understand, I know EdTV was there doing quite a job of collecting video that day of the visit and some of the different aspects of the school that we were talking about and showing off. So, we'd love to show you a brief clip of that now.
Hello, distinguished visitors. We are so excited to welcome our special friends who will be visiting us today.
There are so many ways that Manomet Elementary School is a special place to learn and grow.
We can't wait to get started and show them to you.
Hi, Molly, and this is Charlie. And we're going to be showing you around today.
Yes. So, first, if you would like to walk this way towards the cafeteria, we have our dot and dash robotics programs going on with the second and fifth graders.
These are our dot and dash robots, and I, as a fifth grader, helped these second graders learn how to program them.
And then, if you also look around, last night, we had an art show at our school. And this is just one of the rooms that we had the art in, but a bunch of different students from all the different grade levels participated in it, and there's art all throughout the
We are going to go to Mrs. McElusso, where she's doing hands-on science.
Next, we're going to go into Ms. Johnson's room to see that the writing that they're So, if you still look, there's gonna be much more art on the way down.
And then, over here, we have what, another thing that third grade made, we made a replica. Our teacher painted the background of Monis Garden. Let's see some kindergarteners who have been outside on the playgrounds.
Some of the fifth graders, at the end of the day, get to go down to the kindergartners, help clean up the classrooms, stack the chairs, do all that stuff, so they can have a special, like, relationship with the younger kids in the school and the older kids in the school.
Thank you, Miss Johnson, for coming.
Very good. Thanks to EdTV for all their hard work putting that together for us. We're here tonight to share a mid-cycle update on our 2017 through 2019 school improvement plan. So, what I'd like to do is to start with Goal One, and Michelle Henderson is going to share that particular goal. The goal, so first of all, this is just a list of our school council members at the school. And then, for Goal One, the gist of Goal One is to refine practices and deepen our understanding associated with the units of study at the elementary level for both the reading and the writing. So, these are really an anchor for us to all of the literacy instruction that goes on in our school and throughout the district at the elementary level. And we've been working through this goal to implement some specific strategies and refine what we're doing within the work for these units of study.
Thank you. As we talk about Goal One, I think it's important to recognize that the work being done towards this goal is being done across to all grades, K through five, at Manomet Elementary. We've partaked both in in-service and staff meetings and a lot of time dedicated to this embedded PD with our literacy coach to develop conferring toolkits. The conferring toolkits help the teachers make more effective connections to the mini lessons for individuals and small groups, specifically through the use of mini anchor charts, samples of writing that represent the key teaching points, and tools for the child to use independently to reinforce the skills taught. This past September, we spent both our in-service and grade-level meeting time to build these toolkits, and since that time, they've been in use throughout the entire building. We've also enhanced the differentiation through the use of writing checklists. The units of study in writing have child-friendly checklists for each type of writing students, and they're taught this throughout the year. These types include narrative, opinion, and informational writing. Sometimes, the students are not yet ready for the grade-level checklist based upon their current level of performance, and to help with this, teachers are working on differentiating within this area to use checklist across grade levels to zero in on exactly where the students are performing. We've also piloted a pre- and post-assessments for the narrative writing using common prompts. So, this was piloted in the fall, and as a staff, we've calibrated the analysis of these prompts together at an in-service meeting. Goal-setting was done at this time as well, and we look forward to the ability to better institutionalize this practice as we move forward in the 2018, 2019 school year.
So, for that fourth bullet under this goal, administrative participation in the literacy walkthrough model, this is something that we've really just begun in this last month or so. We had talked about it at one of our PCD meetings, and it's a model that really helps us as administrators to be able to go in and refine our own lenses for what we're looking at when we go in. This fourth and fifth bullet here really go together. For us to be able to provide effective feedback when we go into the rooms to conduct evaluations, we need to make sure we're absorbing all of this new pedagogy as close as possible to the rate at which the teachers are. We're trying to make sure that we keep up to speed. Even though we're not implementing the curriculum every day ourselves, we need to make sure that we know what we're looking at, that we know some of the nuances of what we're looking at. Otherwise, our feedback won't be very valuable. So, that's one of the things that we're trying to do through the literacy walks is to gather as administrators. And we had one day at Cold Spring School where there were six or seven of us, and one day at Manomet Elementary where there was a group of us, where we went through all the different classrooms in the building, trying to look at trends that you can quickly see when you go through, and to try and calibrate and to come to consensus on what some of those pieces are that we're looking at and what conclusions we can draw from that. So, right now, we're at a very early stage with that, and that's something that we hope to continue on into next year. For me personally, it was probably the most valuable piece of professional development for me in these last five or six years, just to be able to gain that perspective and to do it in a very practical way within the context of my own school. So, that was very helpful. That fifth bullet there, like I say, this was one piece of the administrative PD that I've been able to participate in. In addition to that, I've really tried to be a part of more of the grade-level professional development at the school to be able to, again, make sure that I'm as up to speed as possible with what those new approaches that the teachers are learning in order to best provide that feedback. So, for Goal Two here, I'm actually gonna talk about Goal Two. Goal Two was to strengthen the connectedness of student technology use and the data yielded from it in order to drive further instruction. So, one of the things that we know at the elementary level is we have probably ten or fifteen different options for ways that we can engage students during center time and throughout the day in the class on the computers with regard to additional math practice, additional reading practice, but also beyond that, deepening their conceptual understanding through those tools as well. So, two of the ones that we're really putting some energy behind over the course of this past year are Lexia Reading and Symphony Math. So, one of the things in all of our K through two grade levels that we've tried to do now, and with some Title I funding to help with that also, we've been able to increase some of the different Chromebook computers that are available for stations within those classes. of the different Chromebook computers that are available for stations within those classrooms to ensure that all of our K to two students every single day are engaging with that Symphony Math for at least 10 to 15 minutes a day. It's something that we talked about at our principal's meeting, I think it was two or three years ago now, where we had a presenter come in and talk a little bit about some of the trends that they've seen when this program, particularly in the math, is used over and over on a consistent basis, wide scale, on those very early grade levels. We were excited to hear that. And as of last year and into this year, we've really ramped up the amount of commitment and the amount of time with that particular tool that we've used. So one of the great things for Symphony and Lexia is that we have access to, as a district, we have access to somebody who will come in from Symphony, who's also worked in Lexia, to come in and present small groups, one-on-one, and do that right in the course of the school day at no cost. So we took him up on that, and it was very valuable. And it was, again, something where we're really good at gathering lots of data through all these different programs. Where we really need to grow is in our ability to dig into it a little bit and say, okay, what's the so what? So what are we getting at here? How do we make this actionable? How do we use it to help us at the individual student level? And that's one of the themes through all these goals, really, I hope that you here are coming through, is the fact that we're trying to get down to that individual student level whenever possible. So this has really helped us with regard to the math and the writing, the reading, rather, with regard to Lexia. It's something where we have child study meetings on a weekly basis where we'll have individual students that will have conversations about, for different academic pieces, a lot of the times, we have other meetings as well for social-emotional. But for the academic pieces, these reports, these data reports, are becoming more and more of a common feature through Lexia and Symphony. So they're really helping us to be able to target what we're doing. So that's goal number two. And I never pulled over to the, I'm sorry about that, I never pulled over to the steps. I just described them and didn't pull over to them. So we're gonna move on to goal three. And let's see, goal three, that's Lauren.
Yes.
Okay. So for this one, we're trying to look at the social-emotional piece, and there's one piece in particular that I know Lauren's gonna talk a bit about. Do you describe that? Go ahead.
So goal number three is aiming to seek and take advantage of logical links between the many social-emotional initiatives already in place in order to ensure the most cohesive experience possible for students. The most in-depth work done within the school area has included planning during approximately 12 bi-weekly meetings of building administration with a school psychologist and a school nurse. Through these sessions, our school was able to bring social-emotional intervention right to, once again, to the individual student level to a much greater extent than ever before possible. The specific needs of approximately 45 individual students were discussed, brainstormed for potential intervention, and acted upon. In some cases, this took the form of regular counseling. At times, it meant that we needed to arrange for a meeting with family members. Some students required daily check-ins with a school nurse, while others needed a more coordinated effort by all staff in order to implement a specific strategy. In 11 of the cases discussed, it led to direct consultation with the district attendance officer. This is a far greater number of instances than ever before discussed, not due to an increase in need within this area, but rather more of a proactive approach on our part as a staff, particularly in the earlier grades. One of the additional benefits of this work is that these ongoing meetings help to reinforce the work being done during our AM child study meetings that occur throughout the year. These deal with the full range of needs, but with a heavy emphasis on all factors impacting student academics. By aligning the work done during both of these sets of meetings, we have been able to better coordinate intervention for approximately 20% of our student body. In addition, our annual wellness fair was held this past November. The Wellness Fair is dedicated to sharing information with all of our students about a range of topics associated with staying healthy in many ways. This presentation this year incorporated key themes prompted through Superflex, Zones of Regulation, and Second Step. These are a wide variety of tools that are used by both classroom teachers, school psychologists, and specialists such as occupational therapists. These tools are aimed at helping students prepare and be aware of different social situations that they may encounter and how to deal with those social situations with different strategies.
Very good. And then moving on over to goal four, Matt Reardon's going to talk about that one.
So the fourth goal for the school improvement plan is to build and develop an enriching partnership with our two designated sister schools in Plymouth, England, in preparation for the 2020 celebrations. As the initial work that was set out to be done, they did work with two different schools. A majority of the work was done so far with the St. Maurice Primary School in Plymouth, England. Manimet is looking forward to also building a relationship with their second sister school.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure.
The Manimet Elementary School fifth graders conducted a virtual book club with the students at the St. Maurice Primary School in Plymouth, England. They were reading the first of the Harry Potter books, both here and in Plymouth, England. They completed a series of activities that went along with the book. They were hoping to use Google Classroom to complete this work, but technology issues in Plymouth, England caused the group to look into different platforms to complete this collaborative effort. Visual arts teacher, Jamie Cook, she traveled to Plymouth, Plymouth, England, in hopes of creating a project to work between the two school districts. This was termed the Banner Project, which came out of an internship at the Plymouth College for Art. It involved students doing hands-on learning and professional development for teachers in the area of sharing artistic practices. The banners that are being made will be part of the 2020 celebration in both Plymouth, England and Plymouth, Massachusetts. Dr. Frain hosted the principal of the St. Maurice Primary School in Plymouth for a week. They began coordinating efforts on top of, or in addition to, virtual planning sessions that they had already completed. One of the major projects included a letter exchange program between the two schools.
Thank you. At this point, if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Committee members, questions, comments? Ms. Badger.
I just wanted to say, I think that the whole collaboration with Plymouth, England, I think that sounds like a great, I mean, what a thing to do, to read Harry Potter and then to get someone else's opinion, and especially when you get into that book and you're all excited about everything that happens in England and where it takes place, and to be able to communicate with people who are, you know, over there and sound like the characters sound like in your head when you read it. I just think that's a great way to open up the world and the eyes of different perspectives. So I think it's fantastic.
Thank you.
Let me ask you a question. It's been sort of my hope and dream. When, on the fifth graders, working with the fifth graders from the Maurice School, are they developing, are they developing almost personal relationships? Do they know each other at each other's personal level?
So what happened was, for some of the different Skype sessions that we've had, we've had them talking with the other boys and girls briefly. There was a group of about 10 fifth graders involved in this one particular activity that they were doing. It's a smaller school. The other school's a smaller school, so they're year six students, they're our fifth graders. And so there were some opportunities where they had a chance to speak briefly. As you can imagine, when they get in front of the computer like that as a group, there are a lot of one-word sentences and nods and things like that. But it comes up more when they do their writing. And then also, they created brief little video scenes or little reflections from the book, and they sent those video images. So in some of those ways, they've been able to connect. They have also written letters to specific individuals back and forth, so in some of those ways.
Would it be possible for these, when these students move from your school into sixth grade, and those other students move to sixth grade for this link to continue so that by 2020, they actually have, they're on first-name basis? I mean, that would be totally outstanding. That's been a sort of dream of mine. It's hard to do with the time difference and the changing of grades, but just a thought.
Yeah, no, it's something that, it's a great idea. We hadn't thought of that, but I think that's a great idea, something that we can definitely look at.
I also want to comment on the administrative participation, the walkthrough thing. Really, really good move on, you know, good planning on your part to get in, to get in there and to see it working so that as an administrator, you're in there with the details, as Dr. Maestas has been doing in 13 schools across the district. It's really important, I think.
Great.
Any other questions or comments?
I do want to ask a question.
Ms. Haywood.
Just in regards to goal three, with the, with the students that were, I guess, chosen, were they, were they at risk, or was this just?
So for, yep. So what happened was, we have an open agenda once a week where the school psychologist, myself, and any other staff members who would be relevant to a particular concern regarding a student. We can schedule 20-minute meetings every week, so we have about, we probably have about two of those a week where we'll meet before school. The issue could be anything. It could be something with regard to attendance, it could be something with regard to reading. So we email out to whomever needs to be at that meeting, or whoever we'd like to have at that meeting to have that discussion. If they can't be there physically, then we follow up with them and try to see what action steps we can put in. As far as the meetings, the bi-weekly meetings between myself, the school psychologist, and the school nurse, we sit and we look at class lists and go through, and we try to consider, beyond the academic piece, what are some of, so we'll literally go down the kindergarten roster.
Okay.
And we'll go through. So it's something where, if we're seeing or hearing of any concerns whatsoever, and sometimes when we say seeing the concern, it might be with regard to an attendance pattern or a tardiness pattern. And in speaking with John Amberall, our attendance officer, he will tell you that when you're able to intervene, you know, pre-K through fifth grade, he feels as though he has like a 90% success rate with that.
Yeah.
And he'll tell you, when you go to middle school, you know, it drops off somewhat with regard to the impact. And then at the high school, it drops off even more the impact as far as that goes. But that's why we really know we needed to put a lot more energy into being proactive with that piece. And sure, you know, he had said that at the beginning of the year, and sure enough, that's borne out.
Okay, that's wonderful.
Just following Mrs. Haywood's question, which I think is a really good question. I would like to see maybe one of your future updates, some outcome measures here, because, for example, if you've identified a child through these weekly meetings or bi-weekly meetings, let's say, let's just pick tardiness, for example. Without, of course, we wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to share the name, but you certainly could share the data with us, that before we had this dimension, this child was, you know, 10% days late, now it's one, you know. That data would be really helpful.
Well, this is the mid-cycle, and we can produce some of that for you for our, when we present our next plan, we can give you an update on this one, and those numbers are there, and we'd be happy to share those.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other, any other, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sword, I just want to cut one point.
Ms. Dr. Maestas.
Yes. My computer is, has restarted itself and is going through a 12-minute hiatus, and so I cannot advance the meeting. So I'm not sure, maybe Nancy can move the meeting control over to Dr. Campbell, and maybe he can do that. So if you could give us 30 seconds. It just restarted. I don't know what I did to it. It just...
Mrs. Dargy, should I log out?
It's me.
We could take a short recess if you need it. No? Okay.
You got time.
I got time. I'm only a minute.
Okay. We have one job description here this evening. Ms. Frye.
Yes. We added this a little bit later. We were finalizing some details, and sadly, the lady across the room is gonna retire sometime soon, Mrs. Dargy, so we wanted to make sure, we're trying to block it, but that's illegal. So I've worked at that, but I'm not succeeding.
I've been trying for two years, and I finally...
I know, we've been trying. So Nancy and I have worked very collaboratively on this, and we're always looking to make different ways to look at different types of efficiencies and things like that with our overall staffing. So this was reviewed in 2014, but we made a lot of changes based on what she lives by every day and does a great job with. So this is something that we're bringing forward to finalize, because we will be posting it sooner rather than later.
This is...
Big shoes to fill.
This is an action item for us. Any questions on this job description? There were two versions of it kicking around.
Yes.
And I think, and I think I was able to figure out that if you look under job performance responsibilities, and you look on number two, the one that begins with supports the superintendent in all functions is the final job, because the other one read, "in a secondary support."
That is, that is the accurate one, is the secondary support, because we're looking at multiple ways to support the school committee.
So it reads, it reads, it says, is, we're talking about performance responsibility, is a secondary support...
Should I say to?
Should it be to the superintendent?
To the superintendent, yep. I'm glad you caught that. That was the change. So it's actually, is a secondary support to the superintendent.
Okay.
Correct. And all other staff, because of the different roles and different pieces that get uploaded from our whole building, from the business office, HR, and Nancy, so it's not just...
Let me ask you another question about number two. I know, having been chair here, that the administrative assistant does a lot more than to assure that federal and state and local and policy requirements are met. The way this is written, fulfilling the operational aspects of the school committee to assure, but they, that position does a lot more than that. So I would think it should read, fulfilling the operational aspects of the school committee, period, also assures that all federal, state, local, and policy requirements are met.
That makes sense. Absolutely. That makes sense.
Can we do that?
Yep, we can.
Because I know how the job works, and it's a lot more than just that last phrase.
Right, exactly. Oh, I agree. Absolutely. So a period after school committee, then also assures that...
Right, and then start a new sentence.
Yep. And if you, just so you can see...
Clear?
Yes. Your approvals, if you go on...
I was around the table, okay. So with that change, do we have a motion? Ms. Badger?
I move we approve it as amended, approve the job description as amended.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Selly is the second. Any other questions to the motion? Okay, we can vote.
We've aligned them all with the same categories as well, and they're actually, the ones you've approved are on our new website on HR. We're a little excited, so...
Okay, everybody voted in favor?
This doesn't come up because she's...
Oh, yeah. I gotta put her...
We're both in it now.
I have to go in there and update the attendance.
This next agenda item was requested by Ms. Hunt to discuss the Senate bill, and so it's in your package. And it was, I gotta say that I was a little confused, because that, the agenda item addresses the bill, but when you read the mask summary, the House bill, in some cases, has greater numbers than the Senate bill. And so it hasn't come out of conference yet. So if we support one bill over the other, my feeling is we shouldn't be doing that at this point. So I'm, to be honest with you, I'm a little confused. Mr. Selly.
It's up for debate in the House now, so I think we'll have to get some clarity from it as the amendments are proposed through the House now. It may not go to vote through the House because they are in session now, so I'm waiting here back on it, but I agree with you. I think we're gonna need some clear language, so there's no non-parity between both, if that makes sense.
Okay, so we want to wait...
To see what the final outcome is.
We want to wait on this agenda item.
Yeah, but we're hoping on it, because from, from what I gather, there's a stipulation within the bill that says that, you know, in five years, every five years, they can sort of readdress the funding mechanism behind the chapter 70, which is huge, which is big for us. And today's sort of environment, I think, especially with a district like ours, I think we really need to take a good look at it. So I'm really trying to keep a close eye on it and just pay attention to it, to see where it's at. And if I do hear anything, I'll certainly let you know. But I'm hoping it goes through. I just don't know with them, with going through the House now, I don't know if...
Following Mrs. Trusselli's lead, we won't take any action on this. Wait for, we'll wait for feedback from you.
Absolutely, yeah.
Dr. Maestas.
Yeah, there is a legislative bulletin that came out on the, on May 14th. I received it the 16th. I think you've all received it. And it is a, Ms. Haywood, you will be receiving these from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And this legislative update kind of breaks down all the categories that we have an interest in education funding.
Yes.
And actually, how much is put aside, is set aside for each category within education funding. So this document is a review of the recommendations by the Senate Ways and Means. So it kind of gives an idea of where they're heading. It also highlights the increases and where they're looking to place dollars. Ms. Dargy did insert this into the superintendent's report. So if you go into under superintendent's report for this evening, you will see the legislative updates, so you can actually get a flavor of what the different sections are within the budget, kind of get up to date on what those pieces... budget, kind of get up to date on what those pieces are. And I think to Mr. Selly's point, I think we need to know exactly what we are supporting, or what the school committee will support, based on what those final recommendations are.
And it may not come through right now. This might be, as we've seen it happen before, when it has to go and it's debated in the House, it may not go through. So we may have some time behind it. So I'll keep an ear out for sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Reports and proposals from committee members. Committee members with reports. Ms. Badger?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not there yet. I just wanted to give everybody a heads up. I don't know if we've received an invitation or not, and I don't know who it's going to go to. But No Place for Hate has just decided to, they're going to be giving two scholarships or awards, I should say, to students. And it's going to be awarded at the next selectmen's meeting on the 29th, or I shouldn't say the next one, next week's, the 29th. And they're going to invite some members of the school committee, and it's going to be at 7:00. And it's to two students who, it's a social justice award. So those who stand up for, you know, what No Place for Hate stands for. I forgot to bring the language, but we're really excited for it to be our first time. You know, we used to give them out probably four, four or five years ago. We gave them out at the Martin Luther King Breakfast, and we gave the book awards. But, you know, we started to think, like, how do you, how do we best continue to keep our, get our message out there and let students know how important it is to, you know, stand up for what you believe in and what is right? And so we came up, one of our committee members came up with this great idea, John came up with this great idea, and so we're excited about that. But that should be an invitation that's going to come from No Place for Hate, hopefully this week. So.
For seniors?
Yes, it's going to, it's two seniors, one at North and one at South.
And that will be, will they also be announced at the awards?
No, we had some committee discussion about that, and it was kind of controversial. We, because of the way it's a scholarship, it wasn't open, the committee didn't view it open to everybody.
I get you.
And so it wanted to be able to hit anybody who's in the school, regardless of whether they're going to college or they're, you know, what they're doing. So that's how they decided this. And since we're a town committee, it's going to the selectmen. So that's why they're not coming here. And then just a reminder about the PMS Kids Ride at the end of June. If you haven't signed up or registered to bring your kids, bring yourself and volunteer, it's a really fun event, right after school gets out this Saturday, and Gary's going to be leading the five miles.
You can ride with me. You can ride.
It's going to be fun.
Bicycle made for two?
Well, bicycle made for three, maybe.
Yeah. We're ahead of last year in our numbers. We're just hoping we stay that way. So we continue to raise as much money as possible for cancer research. That's it.
Okay. Other reports and proposals. Well, you know, I just wanted to report out on the, the Massachusetts Supreme Court made its ruling on the charter schools, which I thought was a very important ruling for us to pay attention to. And they pretty much ruled, the lower court had, there was, there was a suit filed against the Department of Education saying that students attending the charter school were not getting proper education because there was a cap on charter schools. So the, so the lower court found in favor of the defendants, which is, in this case, the Department of Education. And the Supreme Court withheld that finding, pretty much saying that you, the charter school students are getting an adequate education. But one of the points they made that I thought was very significant, when they wrote, when they wrote the decision, they wrote that charter, and I have it here if anyone wants to read. In fact, I'm going to read you that paragraph, because I thought it was really, we've talked about it here at the table. For example, "Limits on charter schools may be based on a policy concern regarding the departure from local democratic control over public schools by local school committees." In other words, Supreme Judicial Court felt that the school committee should have more say over what goes on in a charter school and not, according to the Supreme Court, a, an executive of private boards of trustees. So I think it's an interesting finding, and it's well overdue.
I agree with that.
Anything else under reports and proposals? Okay, moving off that agenda item, PYDC. Any report?
Our next meeting is Friday, June 8th.
Say again?
Our next meeting is June 8th.
Okay. Building committee, we did have a building committee meeting, and I'll run through some of it quickly. Russell Street parking deck is going ahead. Town Hall working on warranty work. The library work is going ahead. A OPM has been selected. Maritime Facility is getting its grants. The fire station is now going into design review. And there was a long discussion about Plymouth South High School. And the, they're trying to get the fields placed, and it looks like it's all going to be in line for the athletes to arrive in August.
Nice.
That's not the plan, huh?
Okay. Okay, now, I've got too many papers in front of me. Personnel.
Yes. We've had two coach-adviser appointments, two classified appointments, one short-term maternity leave, and two resignations.
Okay, any questions on the personnel report? Okay. Homeschool Improvement Plan, I think we have one?
Yes, tonight, we have one homeschool improvement plan. It has been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office, and it meets all the, all the requirements set forth by this committee, and I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation. Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the homeschool plan as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Morgan is the second. Any questions on the vote, I mean, on motion? Okay, let's take the vote, please. Everybody has voted in favor. Thank you. Accounts payable, Mr. Morgan?
Whereas the school committee members have been provided a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary Report and a warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant S. 052418 dated May 24, 2018, in the amount of $1,417,671.96 as presented.
Is there a second? Ms. Badger is the second. Question to that motion. Okay, so we shall vote for it. Everybody voted in favor. Thank you. At this point, the chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session for two purposes, to discuss collective bargaining and to discuss contract negotiations. Ms. Badger?
So moved.
We have a motion to go into executive session. It's been seconded by Mrs. Triselli. The vote to go into executive session must be an oral vote going around the table. Mrs. Haywood, yes or no?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan. Chair votes yes, Mr. Selly votes yes. The school committee will be going into executive session for the purposes stated. At the end of executive session, I will come back out into open session, and the only action that will happen at that time is to adjourn the meeting. So at this point, we're going into executive session.